All right, I'm here to present tonight on the curriculum recommendation for seventh through ninth grade math. Earlier in the year, you had a K-6 recommendation which you approved for Engage New York. And at the time, we weren't ready to make a recommendation for seventh through ninth. Things just looked different at that level. And we wanted to make sure we were making a solid recommendation and really vetting the process. And to preface that, you know, I'm new in this position. And so I didn't have any heartfelt emotional ties towards any curriculum, which was kind of nice. I got to come in from the ground floor and really examine all of the materials, the new standards, and look at it from, I think, a pretty unique and unbiased perspective. And so that's where we started. We had a big committee, and I would ask any of our committee members who are here tonight to please stand so I can recognize you for all your hard work. These are just a few. I have Brian Dinkel and Doug Horton from Kenneth Henderson, Kendra Austin, ninth grade, Sherry Ursick, and Rebecca Binkley, who are coaches at the high school. They all served on this committee. And then Kendra and Doug actually did the presentation for our curriculum committee. So as things come up tonight, feel free to engage them in the conversations as well. But as you can see from our committee members, we had seventh through ninth grade teachers, a pretty broad perspective of that, plus an upper-level math teachers, math coaches from all grade levels. But the committee didn't just end there. We had elementary reps that included a coach, a principal, and a teacher. Parent reps from every one of those levels too, elementary, middle, and high school. And then we had Leanie Schipholine in on it because a lot of curriculum now is geared towards digital formats. And we didn't want to choose anything that wouldn't align with the one-to-one at the high school or what we do or don't have at the middle schools. Mr. Nordby also served as the high school administrative rep, and he has a strong background in math. And then Leanne and I sat on the committee, but we were non-voting members of the committee. It was quite a process. On January 6th, we had our initial committee meeting. And there were books at that point and materials, and then any digital materials that contained passwords. All of that was given out to the committee members. And that began on January 6th. Then we kind of started setting up a timeline for when we would meet, what would be the topics of discussions of those meetings. And one thing that we felt we needed to do before we really started diving into curriculum was to get a better understanding of the learning progressions. What had come out at the math summit is some teachers were well-versed in those progressions and others were not. And in order to choose a sound curriculum, you have to have a good understanding of what your kids are going to know when they get to you and what they need to know when they leave you. And we wanted to make sure that the curriculum we were choosing not only were true core standards-based, but also were going to meet the needs of the progressions from what we were getting from those fifth and sixth grade students who had the Engage New York curriculum approved. So we had a training on that. And then on January 29th was a district-wide in-service day. And all seventh through ninth grade math teachers and coaches, not just the committee members, we all met at the Horace Good Library, and we spent four hours digging through the curriculum. And how we did that was we had rubrics that KSDE provided that really evaluated each of the curriculums pretty intensely. And teachers worked on those for those four hours, as well as there were two additional dates that I opened up the library. And then teachers at any time throughout this process could check into Horace Good Library and review those materials on their own. So every teacher, grade seven through nine, had access to evaluate and give input to the committee members. So then after all the rubrics were completed, we found that there were a lot of discrepancies in the way teachers think about the curriculum. And so we couldn't only look at that data. It was definitely an important piece, but we had to look at some other things. We looked at the Ed reports, which was only going to be helpful for grades seven through eight because Ed reports didn't address ninth grade standards. We looked at the Ed reports, and two of the three of our curriculum choices scored fairly high on Ed reports: Eureka Math, Engage New York, and Agile Minds. Agile Minds was very weak at the seventh grade level, but very strong at the eighth grade level. So we had to weigh that in, again, looking at those learning progressions. We also looked at the price of all the materials. It can't be the be-all, end-all, but at the same time, if you're going to pay $250,000 to $300,000 for a product that only serves grades seven through nine, it really better be good. And so we looked at the price. We looked at the technology needs of digital curriculum versus non-digital curriculum. And of course, at the high school level, that's a big component. We can look at digital curriculum. We have the access with the one-to-one iPads. That wasn't the case necessarily at the middle school level. We looked at the professional development that was offered with each of them and what the prices of that would look like in terms of what came with each curriculum. And then we also looked at other items, like K-6 adopted Eureka Math. Would it be a smooth transition to go with other things? We looked at AIMS Web data, and that data was looking very good. And although one of the complaints of AIMS Web is that it doesn't match the curriculum, our scores in AIMS Web are rising. And so it has to be a part of the curriculum is working for those scores to be increasing. And then we cussed and discussed and got into groups and changed groups many times. And so what we finally did was on February 29th, that was our last committee meeting, and we took all the pros and cons of all of the curriculum. We were looking at three major curriculum at this point, broke into two groups, weighed out the pros and cons, and then went to a paper-pencil vote. And we kind of used a rubric to help guide our voting. You didn't have to vote according to the rubric, but you could kind of rank: this one's better on price, this one's better on PD, and so forth. And the final vote was that grades seven and eight voted very strongly to keep Eureka Math, which is Engage New York, and ninth grade would like to go with Agile Minds. It's more of a digital-based curriculum, which, again, they can support. And so that is the recommendation that we are providing to you moving forward. For the next five years, which would be the remainder of this curriculum adoption process, grades seven and eight will continue with what they piloted, which was Eureka Math, and grade nine would make a shift to Agile Minds. Questions? Yes?
At one time, I know that those were the grades specifically that were concerned about previously Engage New York, Eureka Math. What was the change? Am I correct or not?
No, you are correct.
I was wondering. It's encouraging, I was wondering what the change was.
Yeah, I think it was when you started looking at all of the information together versus focusing on some of the things that were concerns. Parent, the parent component was a big concern with Engage New York. But as you were looking at Engage New York, another curriculum we looked at was CMP 3. That was kind of the second ranked one for a long time. That had a weak parent component, too. We weren't seeing anything just jump out. And that told us as a committee, we're going to have to make adjustments as our district in terms of parent support with the math. We are not going to be able to rely on a textbook helping with that.
And as for like the honors math, some of the special ed concerns, like where's some of that?
Special ed folks and DSL folks were part of the overall math teachers that also filled out the rubrics, and they supported the Eureka Math curriculum.
Is it going to be kind of like the K-6, or are they going to have some accommodations? What's, I don't remember the term we're using now.
Yes. They will be able to use supplementary materials, accommodations, modifications, as long as it doesn't deviate from the intent of the curriculum. Let me give you an example. Mr. Dinkel gave this example at the committee meeting. There is a problem in Eureka Math, and it's kind of geometry a little bit. And you prop a ladder up against the wall. Well, if you physically did that problem the way it's laid out, the ladder would fall because they don't have it propped up at the right angle. So that would be an example of modifying the angle, and you could still teach the Pythagorean theorem.
And for the honors classes, will they be teaching?
Right, so the honors classes are going to prove a challenge. We're going to stick with the curriculum that was adopted. But what we're finding is, in the past, honors classes literally skipped a grade level. So if you were in honors seventh grade math, you were doing eighth grade math. And then your eighth grade year, you were doing Algebra I. So you skipped this whole year of seventh grade math. Well, with the shifts and the progressions, that isn't doing us any favors. So we're going to have to realign our curriculum, and we may, we're going to look at which Todd model, where they do a pretty strong component of seventh and eighth grade math mixed at the seventh grade level, and then move into the second half of eighth grade math slash Algebra I and eighth grade level. Yes.
Question. If this transition from one progression to another, are they going to mesh?
Right. Because we stuck with Engage New York, that transition will be seamless, we hope. We're hoping more so now that we'll be starting the third year of it next year. With Agile Minds at the high school, it should be seamless as well. The progressions aren't any different. It's just the mode of curriculum that is changing. What we found at the high school was, for two years, they've been doing Engage New York on a block schedule. And the Engage New York curriculum really looks for a strong 55 to 60-minute block to get through the material. Well, although they had 85 minutes, 85 minutes would cover two days, and you couldn't get through effectively two full modules in a class period. And they were picking and choosing. And they didn't, on their behalf, they didn't have a really good two years of understanding what they should be picking and choosing out of that curriculum. The Agile Minds curriculum has two key components that sold us on the product. One is an algebra curriculum called Intensified Algebra. And that requires a little longer block of time, so we're going to put that class during fourth period on next year's schedule where that mentoring would come in. And I don't know if you remember last year's test scores, but there were several students who scored at about a Level 1 on the state assessment. And the Intensified Algebra does force students to fall between one and three years below grade level. And it provides a little bit more of intensive support while they're still gaining algebra credit. You don't have to throw in a free algebra, and then the kids still at some point have to pick up algebra. So this gives kind of a second option of already intensified math where our kids can retain that credit.
So do you expect that Agile Minds will be seamless?
We think it will be more conducive to the timeframe allowed for math, and it has a little more of an intensive formative assessment component. At the high school level, we lack strong formative assessments. We have that, a pretty good base at the elementary, actually K-8 level. At the high school level, we don't have a strong formative assessment component. This is a digital component that it gives feedback immediately, and it really pinpoints or diagnoses the areas of, so that was another bonus for us for this curriculum. But because it is digital-based, it wasn't a good option for the high school.
Does Agile Minds have a product for 10 through 12 months?
They have a geometry component that's pretty strong. And I didn't look into algebra, too, because it's more. But it does have a geometry component that's strong, but because we had already adopted geometry material, I would expect if we have good results in the next five-year adoption, it would be something we'd look at.
To be double-doubt it, other than the lack of strong developed parent piece, what is the biggest negative that you see to the Engage New York effort, do you have a thought?
Well, I think the teachers struggle with having to make copies and maintain the paperwork. And that's a legitimate concern. And we weighed that out. I think we can attest to that. I mean, that was one of the components. Do we want to go with an actual bound book or the other? Well, again, money isn't the be-all and end-all. But at least with Engage New York, you don't have to copy everything. You copy what you use. There were some components of the other curriculum that we knew we weren't going to use in it, but we're purchasing it. So it is a catch-2. But the copy, I think the copying is the biggest inconvenience.
If we do have the opportunity, Dr. Carlin, to go to a one-to-one at the middle school level, could we, are those, is that product available digitally?
The?
The Engage New York?
Well, I think what our ninth grade teachers do is they upload it to eBackpack, so it's not a copying machine.
So would we do that at the middle school?
Yes.
Correct. If we can support it?
Correct.
Any other questions?
I'm curious, how many rubrics were put in from teachers outside of the community?
The seventh through the ninth grade math teachers, I think there were four teachers who didn't turn any in, and a couple who kind of picked and choose. They maybe turned in one of the three options. But overall, I mean, there was, the majority did do them. They were just inconsistent. I can give you an example. The top three that we chose had to meet some pretty strict guidelines. I don't know if you remember, but Dr. Carlin had laid out some non-negotiables. And they had to not just say meets the standards. They had to, that couldn't just be stamped on the front of the textbook. I mean, we had to show through that rubric they met the standards. A couple teachers ranked them very low, and the first box was, does this meet the standards? And the check mark was no. Well, I wouldn't have put anything out there that didn't meet the standards. So there were, you know, math is very emotional in the district, and rightly so. So that's why we couldn't only look at the rubrics in our decision.
More questions?
Committee members, do you have comments that I missed anything? We would appreciate, because we do have to purchase the Agile Minds at some point, just about maybe by the April 18th or 19th.
We'll put this on for old business for the next meeting. And if you parents have any comments or want to come to the meeting or talk to us if you agree.
Before you move on, President, I'd just like to thank the committee members that are here tonight and all those that weren't able to be here. But thank you for your time and your effort on this. As I've said a number of times, we're in a time here where this isn't a typical math textbook adoption. These are significant changes because of the changes in the standards. So the time that's been involved for our math teachers has been significant. And we really appreciate you putting in that time to come up with the best possible curriculum for our kids.
Thank you very much. I had asked to put the new RIT project on for our agenda. This is dealing with Chapel Heights, too. And we have Matt Allen here in case you don't have him.
Thank you for letting us in.
Thank you very much for coming. And thanks for being our bunch of legion. Don't take a personal map.
This is fascinating.
Basically, because this is an issue dealing with property taxes, and that's how we get our money, I thought it would be something that we should at least have on the agenda. Because if it is passed, and we have 30 days to object for it to not go into effect, so I wanted us to at least address it and make a conscious decision with regard to this matter. Does anyone have any questions about the project? I don't know if Matt can talk about the project directly, but the process or anything like that.
I'd like to grill anything that you want to ask.
I think it's great to have more houses in this price range to be able to accommodate our community's needs. We've got teachers right now that are being displaced and have no place to live. And I think that this is very important. And I kind of think that we're a pretty good community partner, as well as the other partnerships that we have. Although this does affect the revenue that we're qualified for at the state level, I think it's important for us to support this endeavor for our overall community needs.
Does anyone have any questions or concerns, so that we don't need to put this on old business next year, or if it passes the city commission, which I'm assuming will? So can we put this on old business just to kind of, I don't know, if we have to? Anything else on that? Thank you, Matt. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Your patience. Next up is the calendar recommendation with Mr. Hogan. Are you going to talk to us about that?
I am. I'm going to give the board just a little summary of the calendar committee, the work that they've done, kind of a timeline, where we're at right now, looking forward to making our recommendation to the board. So the calendar committee is made up of, this year, 20 different people. Three of those people are classified staff, nine certified staff, they're appointed by GCA, three administrators, and three parent community members. We have two board members, inspectors, and scanning, and four members of the committee. And all of these folks serve on a three-year term. So every year, we have to come in off, and we'll add and pull back. Which kind of gives it some uniqueness, is that there's a different perspective as we work through the calendar process. So this committee started in October, a meeting, and they were charged with creating two different types of calendars: a traditional model and an alternative proposal. Traditional draft is one that meets all the requirements of the state and also all the language in the negotiated agreement. An alternative draft would be one that met all the state requirements, but didn't meet all the requirements of the negotiated agreement. An example of that, this year's draft proposal created two hours early release time to allow for staff to have more time to collaborate. In order for us to get those two hours of time, we had to lengthen our instructional day by 10 minutes. And then we took four in-service days, reallocated those in order to have the Friday early release. So changing the instructional day was requiring some flexibility for our language in the negotiated agreement. Language is added back in 2010, 2011 to the negotiated contract that allowed that committee to do that. And we've been making alternative calendar proposals every year since. In the last three years, this one included and the two previous, the proposal really hasn't changed a lot in terms of what that alternative draft looked like. The calendar committee created survey questions. They went out to the entire staff, received feedback. And then from that feedback, the committee really put in the work to come up with two separate traditional drafts, mostly the same. They were very similar to what we have now, but there were some nuances there that would change. And then that went out to a vote at the end of November. And on the 7th of December, draft number one was selected, and it was a very close vote, 235 to 231 in terms of the traditional draft. So at that point, we take that traditional draft calendar, and that's going to be the basis for our alternative calendar. And it's going to, the reason we did that was just so they were looking at similar things. That parent-teacher conflict stays the same, the holidays that were on the traditional calendar was the same, and then like the ending date. So those kinds of things were comparable for one to the next. During the feedback, we got through those survey results. It really became apparent that one of the things that we felt needed to be addressed was just the communication or the impact that was going to be had on the alternative calendar for each individual who wrote on that. So we wanted to improve our communication. So we charged the principals with working with their staff, building leadership teams, their old staff, getting some input in terms of developing what that release time, what their schedule would be, look like during that additional time that we were going to be collaborating. Ultimately, the idea behind that is so that if I worked in a particular school, it wouldn't matter to me what the next building over was doing, but my decision maybe was going to be based on, this is what my Friday was like, this is what our release time for our building needs and where to use for. And that was all developed with principals and staff, even to the point where we sent out maybe some guidelines of what those days would be. So it started in like the first full week in September, and we designated that first Friday release time to be district in-service time. And the next one might be building collaboration time, and the next one's going to be building in-service time. And so we laid all that out as an example, so we made a start to build on what the principals were going to be responsible for in terms of using that collaboration time, and then what a district would be responsible for. So at the request of GCA, a schedule was created after we kind of put all that together. Typically, we had voted electronically to do that. GCA wanted to do it a little differently this year, so we created a schedule that allowed them to get out to each building. And we did that the week prior spring break, and the week after spring break. And then the vote was concluded that last Friday, March 25th, which I'll share the results in a minute. But first, I just want to praise all of the committee members. And I am sure I'm probably short on the hours, but at least 20 hours of meeting times that we meet, over here at the USC, and at General Wilson sometimes. But also reviewing, every survey that we got back, the committee went through those with the black toothed government, and spent a lot of time and effort into developing a calendar. And you two ladies are already on it, and I'm sure other board members have done that. But that's a pretty thankless committee. You're never going to make everybody happy with your choices. There's lots of discussion. I do have to say that it was a great discussion, very open. People kicked around a lot of different ideas through that process. I enjoyed my time sort of doing that, but it's not easy. And certainly getting lots of questions is kind of a process. We do have one committee member, Miss Carr's here, and she's a little thinker coming. But like I said, lots of time and effort put into developing those calendars. So the alternative calendar, the vote put it on the 25th. Based on the results of that, which was 342 to 195, it's the recommendation by the calendar committee to the board that you adopt the traditional calendar for 15, 16, sorry, 16, 17 school years.
Okay, so let me just summarize. The last vote, not this recent one, but last year, it was like, I mean, it was almost 50/50. I mean, very close, like four votes difference. And this year, it's extremely more desirable to keep a traditional calendar. I thought we were getting closer every year to developing something that would allow for professional development, PLC times. So what changed? What happened this last year? Do you know?
Well, speculate, I guess. I mean, I don't really know for sure what the difference was. You're right, I think the vote was closer last year than this year. Again, I think a lot of that has to do with just communication, being able to have time to develop the plans and let people kind of hash through those. Because it is a district-wide calendar, but it has individual impacts. You never don't, I mean, and part of the attraction, I guess, from the alternative calendar, the flexibility that allows for principals to use that release time, to allow more collaboration time with their staff. But it's probably ineffective for me to dictate what that release time looks like for every single building. Because it should, and that's, I think- Because it, it should, and that's, I think, the reason it started. The graduate exposure from the teachers wanting more collaboration time.
Yeah, because this started with the teachers, right?
Correct.
Okay. So, and not, not to point fingers or not to get blamed, I just want to know what's going on. So you say the GCA spoke at all the buildings before the vote. Did they identify something that was not good about the church or the alternative calendar?
I don't know necessarily that they spoke at each building. So when we got to the timeline, we had staff meeting at each one of the buildings. And the principal was to review their plan. So they spent a while working with staff developing this plan. So they would go back, they have to review the plan, what that's going to look like. And then the opportunities for questions, and then the vote to be conducted at that point. GCA was there just to answer the questions. As an example, there was some of the flexibility issue that I talked about earlier in the presentation, like changing the instructional times. We have to notice those, whatever we're going to need flexibility on, we have to notice those through the staff. And so that was kind of the point of the last meeting, was just to get to review, the principal to review their plan, point out those things that were going to be outside of the negotiated agreement. Give the staff a chance to ask and answer the questions. And then GCA to do that as well.
Thank you. I'm just really frustrated because I feel like we're trying to work really hard to accommodate what the teachers are asking for. And it seems like we were going in the right direction, now all of a sudden we're not. And I don't know what changed or what, what we need to do to help teachers get what they need.
Was this, was this the first time that the calendar identified specifically Friday afternoon, two hours on a Friday afternoon?
I was like that last year.
So that's not new?
Right, and we, we went back and we did have those discussions. The calendar committee, should it be Wednesday, should be Friday? And we went back to results, previous surveys, and it was overwhelming that it should be on Fridays. So again, we looked at the draft that we had previous and previous years and we kind of started with that. But we, we did send out a new survey and we tried to take input from that to build a better calendar. But in terms of which day it should be, whether it would be a early release or a late start, that can ask previously and it's overwhelming, so we didn't do that information. But we built it based on those previous assessments.
So is it trying to give up on trying to carve out time, PLC time?
I don't, I don't know that it's a give up point. But it is, I mean, it is going to have to be one of those things where we're going to have to get some more information. Like you said, really, the vote is not supportive of alternative, at least this, alternative proposal. So that'll be up to the calendar committee next year.
I just hate giving them these things of the job to this calendar committee to spend all these hours doing something and they don't know, they don't know what they're trying to fix and they don't know what's wrong. And I know, I mean, you're numb in your head, so you agree, Mark?
I, I can be a little more glass half full maybe, but if it's something that's desired but we haven't found it, it's still there, we just haven't found it.
But if we were close to being there and now we took a huge step back, what happened?
That's certainly the question to put out there. And, and I just think, you know, a lot of school districts is going to be willing to find that answer and not be overwhelmed.
Well, again, I mean, I just, I want to reiterate, this is, this is a teacher, teacher group proposal. The alternative draft is there with this teacher group coming to say we need more time to collaborate. And that's all, that's all we're trying to do is to create ways and do that. This wasn't.
I'm just curious, is it possible to determine whether most teachers feel that they want more time to collaborate? Having, having the vote ready to be out, maybe most teachers feel that they don't have time to collaborate is sufficient. And while some might like more, you know, alternative calendar, could the majority feel that they do have more time?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think there's ways for us to try to capture that information. I think that's a calendar committee decision, it is, it is a decision. You know, at one point, we didn't have to do an alternative proposal. It's just freedom to do that, we appreciate freedom. But we could have just said, well, we're going to go with the traditional, that's what we want to do. And just put out two of those for a vote. But the calendar committee wanted to proceed, and I guess that would be the job for next years to put that out there. We wanted to start with a simple question like that, certainly do that, do that for determination whether to go forward or not.
I also suspect that a lot of teachers need on their own time and do a lot of this collaboration on the person's account. Then they have the control that way, they have the opportunity to discuss what they feel is important. I just want to make sure we support those teachers and do it during their regular workday.
Right.
I don't want them to have to do that on their own time.
Sure.
Maybe that'd be another question too. Because I think a lot of them are doing it, like Jase, but not.